If you're a participant, press pound or hash now. You are now being placed in the meeting. Recording has started. Muted on entry by Star.
Welcome to Blue Jeans. If you're a participant, press pound or hash now. You are now being placed in the meeting. Recording has started. Muted on entry by Star.
Welcome to Blue Jeans. If you're a participant, press pound or hash now. You are now being placed in the meeting. Recording has started. Muted on entry by Star.
Welcome to Blue Jeans. If you're a participant, press pound or hash now. You are now being placed in the meeting. Recording has started. Muted on entry by Star.
Welcome to Blue Jeans. If you're a participant, press pound or hash now. You are now being placed in the meeting. Recording has started. Muted on entry by Star.
Welcome to Blue Jeans. If you're a participant, press pound or hash now. You are now being placed in the meeting. Recording has started. Muted on entry by Star.
Welcome to Blue Jeans. If you're a participant, press pound or hash now. You are now being placed in the meeting. Recording has started. Muted on entry by Star. Welcome to Blue Jeans. If you're a participant, press pound or hash now. You are now being placed in the meeting. Recording has started. Muted on entry by Star. Welcome to Blue Jeans. If you're a participant, press pound or hash now. You are now being placed in the meeting. Recording has started. Muted on entry by Star. Welcome to Blue Jeans. If you're a participant, press pound or hash now. You are now being placed in the meeting. Recording has started. Muted on entry by Star. Welcome to Blue Jeans. If you're a participant, press pound or hash now. You are now being placed in the meeting. Recording has started. Muted on entry by Star. Welcome to Blue Jeans. If you're a participant, press pound or hash now. You are now being placed in the meeting. Recording has started. Muted on entry by Star. Welcome to Blue Jeans. If you're a participant, press pound or hash now. You are now being placed in the meeting. Recording has started. Muted on entry by Star. Welcome to Blue Jeans. If you're a participant, press pound or hash now. You are now being placed in the meeting. Recording has started. Muted on entry by Star. Welcome to Blue Jeans. If you're a participant, press pound or hash now. You are now being placed in the meeting. Recording has started. Muted on entry by Star. Welcome to Blue Jeans. If you're a participant, press pound or hash now. You are now being placed in the meeting. Recording has started. Muted on entry by Star. Welcome to Blue Jeans. If you're a participant, press pound or hash now. You are now being placed in the meeting. Recording has started. Muted on entry by Star. Welcome to Blue Jeans. If you're a participant, press pound or hash now. You are now being placed in the meeting. Recording has started. Muted on entry by Star. Welcome to Blue Jeans. If you're a participant, press pound or hash now. You are now being placed in the meeting. Recording has started. Muted on entry by Star. Welcome to Blue Jeans. If you're a participant, press pound or hash now. You are now being placed in the meeting. Recording has started. Muted on entry by Star. Welcome to Blue Jeans. If you're a participant, press pound or hash now. You are now being placed in the meeting. Recording has started. Muted on entry by Star. Welcome to Blue Jeans. If you're a participant, press pound or hash now. You are now being placed in the meeting. Recording has started. Muted on entry by Star. Welcome to Blue Jeans. If you're a participant, press pound or hash now. You are now being placed in the meeting. Recording has started. Muted on entry by Star. Welcome to Blue Jeans. If you're a participant, press pound or hash now. You are now being placed in the meeting. Recording has started. Muted on entry by Star. Welcome to Blue Jeans. If you're a participant, press pound or hash now. You are now being placed in the meeting. Recording has started. Muted on entry by Star. Welcome to Blue Jeans. If you're a participant, press pound or hash now. You are now being placed in the meeting. Recording has started. Muted on entry by Star. Welcome to Blue Jeans. If you're a participant, press pound or hash now. You are now being placed in the meeting. Recording has started. Muted on entry by Star.
The third. Debbie, can you hear us now? Do we have anybody on the second?
I am on the second.
You're on second.
I'll back you up.
I can hear you fine.
All right, so what data do you want to do?
I'll, here, this Kennedy. Is that going to mess up the recording?
Okay. We've got, on July, on July 12th, we've got Grant, Carrie and Brad, the 19th, we have Jessica and Grant, we'd have one more commissioner on the 19th. The 26th is full, we have the 2nd, 9th, and 16th of August.
I can do any of those. Any of those.
Well, which one would you like?
August 2nd and August 16th.
What are the hours? Concerts in the park are from 5 to 8, so kind of the same time of our meetings. But once the concerts happen, I think the planning commissioners can take off and staff will do the breakdown. That was 26th and 27th for August. No, the concerts in the Bonnie Lake days are, let me pull that up. Yes, it's a Friday, and I want to say it's like 5 to 8 on Friday, and then like...
Something like that in the morning on Saturday.
Yeah, it's like 10 or 11, like 6 or 7 on Sa- Saturday.
All day, so we might be able to break that one.
Yeah, so as I said, we have the meeting in June, so that's way out in August, so just think about it if you want to do Bonnie Lake days, let me know and we can figure out... Whoever wants to be there, we can figure out a shifting and break it down.
If I can do any of the other dates that don't have, aren't full, but...
It's not technically a meeting, so it is volunteer.
We love volunteering our time.
Good. Who do we have for the 23rd? Is that full?
I'm Craig, and it's a lake.
And Brad, right?
Brad.
And Brad, okay. And we'll send out an email with all of these dates and times and who's volunteered.
Okay. Are we going to have the shirts by then?
We'll have name badges by then.
We can make our own shirt. We can go rogue.
Debbie, sorry about that. Did you have any questions on CIPA that I can answer?
No, it was pretty straightforward stuff.
Okay. We're waiting for that just to get finalized. Do business, none? Will the good or the or- correspondence? Staff comments?
Just two. We will have another public hearing on the 14th, and it's the ordinance that will implement the items from the technical memorandum that you saw back earlier this month. We just have to have that done by the end of June. So we'll be taking those items that we talked about and putting those into an ordinance and doing the public hearing that night. That will be our last meeting kind of for the summer. We do need to figure out kind of what we're going to do about the September meeting, whether we want to move it to either the last week of August or the second week of September. My preference is the second week of September. Reason is, is the first week of September is always the planning directors conference, so I know woe is me, I have to go to Shalane for a week in September. But, so typically, we've had to move that one. I would recommend doing it on September 13th, which is that second week in September. So if everybody's agreeable, we'll just kind of, just look at your calendars and we'll talk about that at the June meeting. I'm hoping September will be in the new building, but there's a possibility we'll still be here because what I found out is while the screen is up, the projector is up, the mics are in, we figured out recording, we don't have cameras. So we can't do virtual type meetings over there until we get cameras, so... So close, but yet so far away. So June will definitely be here. Chuck and IT people are talking about how to solve that problem and hopefully September. Does it like do the September 13th? Maybe they'll get it ordered and get it installed over the summer and we'll get lucky. But I definitely am going to want to do the open house in the new building, so... I apologize. I know we got to move her in October, maybe we'll move the planning commission over in October a year later, so... If you ever want to see the new building, I know Grant's been over. Brad's been over. Yeah, just Craig's been over. If you want to tour and to see more than you saw, you know, just give me an email and I can, I'll, you know, myself or somebody over there, all my staff can give you a tour of the building. It's a really nice building, so...
I have not seen it.
So if you...
I've seen half side of it, and just briefly to...
And I don't know. Or incorporated into the Bonnie Lake Days. It might be, I would email David Wells. Because I would like, I've got my veterans group that would like to have a ticket. So what I would do is email David Wells and I can get you his email address, and he's the one that coordinates all of, all of those tables at those different events. And don't worry, he even made me fill out forms for the tables. I had to fill out forms for all my tables and who's, yeah, so I didn't get any special treatment.
I go through all the red team.
Any more staff comments?
I just wanted to thank you guys for the thank you. I know the honor, so. And of course, if you have any questions or need, all the candidates can always come to me, you know, while we work out the next couple meetings. Yeah, Brad and.
Kennedy, do you have anything to add now that you are officially the planning commission clerk?
I noticed Commissioner Strauss Boyd got, uh, an honor. You want to share?
Well, thank you. So I was accepted to the University of Washington's Master Program for Infrastructure Planning Management. So I'm very excited and Jason, again, thank you for your letter of recommendation, but yep, I start in the fall.
If you need an internship, contact me, we're doing a lot of infrastructure planning.